Roll call, please.
Mrs. Caldwell?
Here.
Mr. Dowdell?
Here.
Mr. Gallagher? Absent. Mr. Hickman?
Present.
Mrs. Rossler?
Here.
Mr. Rogers?
Here.
Mr. Schlock?
Here.
Mrs. Stepnick?
Here.
Mr. Zuko?
Here.
Eight members present.
Thank you. We have a couple of student features this evening. Mrs. Caldwell is going to present. First group is the girls soccer with Coach Caitlin. Shoe shirt?
Hi, Coach, come on up.
Excuse me.
Thank you for coming. We're honored to have Coach with us. She's going to share with us the team's accomplishments for this season. And we have several players to be acknowledged. Although the team with their great successes this year, they all deserve great commendations from the board and the community as well. So, thank you.
I don't know how to move that. I wish I didn't have to talk into it.
That's okay.
Okay. First, I want to thank all those people who support our team. If I listed people, I feel like I'd forget a lot of people. So, I just want to thank everybody in the community. We may not get a lot of fans at our games, but they're very passionate fans. Thank the parents, thank the girls, thank the board, thank the administrators, Mr. Alpino. We have a really great training staff with Chloe and Ryan also. They kept our girls healthy, they kept them safe, which is most important. And a lot of the girls, when they were hurt, were treated very well. As with every season, the team had its ups and downs. And how they endured and overcame those things is a true testament to their character. A few words to describe this team, if you didn't get a chance to see them in action, is they're focused, they're positive, they're fearless, they're respectful, they're supportive, they're confident. But what sets this team apart from all others is the ability to inspire. They inspired me, they inspired the youth, they inspired the young ball girls at our games, and the kids that attend our kids camp in June. They inspired each other to work hard, harder than the day they did before, whether intentional or innate. These young women are amazing student athletes and role models for young girls in our community. Just some statistics that these girls had over the season. They scored 70 goals, which averages about four goals a game. And in soccer, the reason why people don't watch it is because it's not that exciting. So, four goals a game is pretty good for a girls soccer team. We had two goalies this year, two junior goalkeepers, who were both pretty amazing. And in our 18 games, they had nine shutouts. So, that's a pretty good accomplishment for two separate keepers in our back line. We were ranked in the top 10 for the entire season, and we were the smallest quad A soccer team. So, to be in the top 10 for the entire season is a big accomplishment for us. We came in second in the section, and were able to host a playoff game, which meant we were the higher seed. Unfortunately, we fell short to North Allegheny, and they ended up moving on to the state tournament. So, they had a pretty good season, although they beat us. So, do you want me to name all the players individually?
Yes, if you wouldn't mind, Coach, introducing the girls. And several have some great acknowledgements throughout the WPIAL. And also, when the girls come up, if the seniors wouldn't mind sharing with us what their future plans are, because we always find that exciting.
I think that's a great idea.
Juniors, underclassmen, you have a year to think about it. And if you're undecided, that's okay, too. That means you are very broad-based in your thinking.
We have two... We have two governing companies or establishments that girls are selected as all-section. We have the Big Five Six, which is all the bigger schools, the quad A schools. And then we have a Coaches Association, who votes for all-sections. So, some girls got both, some girls got one, some girls got the other. So, I'll try and establish the difference between the two, but just know that there's two separate all-sections that these girls could have achieved. Elena Banta is not here, she got the Big Five Six Honorable Mention. And then Ally Briner, who's our goalkeeper, one of our goalkeepers. Just stand here. She was Big Fifty-Six First Team, and she was also the Coaches Association All-Section Team. I should have probably went in this order. Okay. Jordan was our only all-WPIAL player. She was also first-team all-section for both associations. She was also our leading goal scorer and our leading assister, leading our team with assists. Jasmine was the Coaches Association First Team and the Big Fifty-Six Second Team Selection. Zoe was the... Zoe was the Big Fifty-Six Second Team Selection and another one of our amazing goalkeepers. Carrie was a Big Fifty-Six Second Team Selection. Taylor was also a Big Fifty-Six First Team, a Coaches Association First Team, and four-year starter as our centerback, so she'll be missed. Sarah's not here. Sarah Pearlman was a Big Fifty-Six Honorable Mention Selection. And I think... Oh, and Gina Proviana, who couldn't appear because she had another training session tonight. She was first-team Big Fifty-Six and then the Coaches Association First Team as well, and she's a freshman. So, we have big, high hopes for her, yeah. And that's the girls soccer team. And then any senior that wants to share. That needs to share. Come on, Jordan. Oh, perfect. This is our captain.
Thank you. All right. So, just to start off, where I'm going, I am attending Gannon University up in Erie. And I'm undecided if I want to play soccer there. They did, like, offer me a spot, and I did talk with the coach. But I don't really know if I can do that commitment. But I know if I don't play at the varsity level, I'll definitely be playing club, because I can't really get rid of soccer, so... I'm studying criminal justice, and I would like to go, like, into the FBI and be part of the BAU, so that's what I want to do.
All right. So, I'm probably going to go to Pitt to major in chemistry, and I don't know if I'm playing soccer or not. And I don't really know.
I'm undecided of where I'm going, but I plan to study physical education. I'm undecided where I'm going also, but I'm going to study interior design.
Thank you very much, ladies. Thank you.
Our next student feature will be the boys soccer team coached by Anthony Russo.
Okay, to start off, we have something for Coach Russo. And we'd like to make the community aware that Coach Russo was selected to WPIAL's Boys Soccer Coach of the Year in Quad A Section Three. That's quite an accomplishment. And we'll let Coach introduce the team and tell us a little bit about your season.
Okay. All right. Thank you, first of all, for everybody for having us here to honor the young men and young women who have accomplished so much this season. I think that the... What Coach Shuckert and what I'm doing here for the programs is certainly reminiscent of the years that I was in high school and prior to that. So, I just want to congratulate the girls first off for the continued success and wish you guys success in whatever you guys do in the future. Little bit about us is, last year, we finished, I think it was 10 and 5. This year, we improved to 11 and 6. We were 10 and 2 in the section. And so, it was an improvement from last year. These boys certainly were made of a different material this year. I mean, there was, just to let you guys know, there was every... If there's a tie at the end of the game, we go into overtime, and it's sudden death. So, you score, you win. These boys were 4 and 1 in overtime. Unfortunately, the one that decided ended our season. But just, it was a very resilient group. They believed in me, and I believed in them, and it certainly showed in the way that they played, the way they carried themselves, both on and off the field. So, a big round of applause for the guys that are honored here, but also for the guys that aren't here that deserve the appreciation and the recognition as well. Just, really, the only stat that really stood out to me is, we've outscored our opponents 45 to 22 this year. You know, in 18 games that we played, that's, you know, just over a goal a game. So, at the high school level, where organization is key, where, you know, fitness is key, these guys were very well organized from front to back. They played for each other, and it spoke volume in the way that they approached each game. So, I couldn't be more happy about that. And the other thing that I would say is, we had... You're only supposed to nominate five people for these recognitions. I couldn't lock down five names, so I sent 12 in, okay? The other coaches weren't very happy about that, but it's what it came down to. There were so many kids that stepped up at different parts of the season, that made the season what it was, that it was hard to just lock down five names. So, I gave 12 and let them choose from there. So, of the 12 names, we... There were five that were chosen for the Coaches Associations, and you could only have five represent your team. So, there was five kids, the max, that we could have represent the Coaches Association. As for the Big Fifty-Six, or Five Six, I'm not sure exactly what it is, to be honest. But there are... We have nine kids, which was the most out of any team in the section to be recognized for that. So, the play, everything that these guys have done over the season has certainly been noticed, and I couldn't be more proud of them. So, without further ado, I can call up the guys and... Okay, perfect. All right, perfect. So, first and foremost, we have Ethan Eckert. He was a Big Five Six Second Team Selection. Second, his twin brother Gavin Eckert. Gavin was a Coaches Association Selection and a Big Five Six Second Team Selection. Third, Jordan Floyd, J.C. J.C. was the only player chosen to the All Whipple Team. So, once you are chosen for the All-Section, the Coaches Association All-Section Team, you're nominated for All Whipple and All-State. And J.C. was the only one to make it on, out of our team for that. So, congratulations to him. Fourth is Darius Dee Dee Flowers. Dee Dee is a freshman. He is an honorable mention on the Big Five Six Committee. Dee Dee scored some big goals for us, had some, a few big assists. So, I look forward to what he has to give to us for the next three years. Fifth, we have Luke Gilde. Luke Gilde is a sophomore, and was also a second-team for the Big Five Six Selection. Next up, we have Cole Kelly. Cole Kelly is also a sophomore. He was a Coaches Association All-Section Selection, as well as a Big Five Six First Team Selection. Next up, Cole Lisovich. Cole was a senior. He was a Coaches First All-Team Selection, and he was a Second Team Big Fifty-Six Selection. Next up, Senior Callan Sharba. He was a Coaches Association First Team Member, as well as a Big Fifty-Six First Team Member. And last but not least, Senior Joey Zimmerman. Joey was a Big Five Six Second Team Selection and one of the starting centerbacks, who pretty much played every game for me the past two years. All right. So, senior boys, I know you guys are a little bit shy when it comes to public speaking, so let's go ahead and tell everybody what your plans are.
All right. So, I'm going to go to college, I don't know where, but I'm going to play soccer and most likely study business.
I'll probably attend UPJ or Penn State Baron, and probably play soccer and go for engineering.
I'll probably go to college and probably play soccer.
Okay, thank you very much, Coach. Thank you, gentlemen. Congratulations on a great year. Good luck in your future.
And third student feature will be girls volleyball, Coach Kelsey Ball.
So, for this year, for the girls volleyball team, this was what started out as my twin sisters and I's second year here. Last year, we had made it to playoffs and had a lot of seniors. So, this year, we were really looking for the juniors, who three of them are now seniors here with us today, to step up and kind of take the reign and lead us back to the playoffs, which is where we wanted to be again, which we did, which was great. Two of the girls here were also our team captains, Brianna Byalotta and Bailey Raposa. We had a very good season this year, even with all of the craziness of switching coaches, adding a new coach, things of that nature, which is not stuff that typically happens or goes on during high school seasons. So, I will start with Brianna Byalotta. She was our senior outside hitter. She played all six rotations for us and really led the way offensively. She was the Big Fifty-Six Second Team, and she also was the best hitter at the Deer Lakes Tournament and the Post Gazette Section Four All-Stars Second Team. Our second senior is Sophia Chappkas. She was a middle for us this year, and she did a great job all year, blocking, and very, very efficient offensively, which is great to see as a coach, and really led the team up front for us, which was something that we needed to step up in terms of losing seniors last year. Sophia Chappkas was a Big Fifty-Six Honorable Mention and the Post Gazette Section Four And our last senior, Bailey Raposa, she was our libero, and she did a phenomenal job these past few years, just really handling the back row and leading the way for us defensively. She was a Big Fifty-Six Second Team, the best defensive player at the Deer Lakes Tournament, and the Post Gazette Section Four All-Star Second Team. I will let these young women tell you about their future.
Thanks, Kelsey. Well, I'm playing volleyball in school, I just don't know where yet, and I'm going to major in early childhood education.
I'm undecided on where I want to go, and I plan to major in nursing.
I'm going to Robert Morris to study nursing.
Thank you, everyone, for coming. I think if anyone wants to take pictures, any parents or any groups together, we usually can spend some time over here and get together, if you'd all like to do that on the night when our student athletes are honored. So, thanks, everyone, for coming, too. We appreciate your attendance.
Congratulations to all the student athletes. Okay, this evening, the board met in executive session to discuss matters of personnel, negotiations, litigation, and student confidentiality. I'm going to pause a few minutes for the students to kind of settle a little bit.
Callan, this is this...
Everybody left.
This is what they were talking about. Are they approved by the Department of Education?
No, not...
You're the citizen. You're the citizen.
Right now, PD is currently wanting to make it mandatory, writing their own. This may be it, I don't think that they haven't said yet, but this is all that... This is the most highly regarded...
At this time, I'd like to invite any citizens to come forward to make any comments on agenda items or non-agenda items. I think most of them...
Pam Salerno, 220, Ligonier Lane. This is an agenda item. I was looking over the information for today for approval, and I came across the NHS contract. And my question is, is I was wondering if there was any discussion that happened prior to the recommended approval tonight of that contract? And if so, I was wondering if any time was taken into actually looking. At the last page of that contract is a list of prices for some of the services that we're outsourcing to NHS. This is a school that some children are being sent to that are on the spectrum, emotional disturbances. And my question to the board is, is that we need to really take a look at what Plumborough is providing in the district. And we need to see if this is something that can be provided in-house. The best practice is to have students in their home school. Some of the services, one of the services listed is for a functional behavioral analysis. They're charging an awful lot of money for an FBA than any special education teacher can do in a school district. Also, for one student to attend with an aide, this aide being part-time, and I did not include PT or OT services, you're looking over $60,000 for a student. That does not include the other services that I'm talking about. Once you add those services, you're looking at close about 80. So, you need to really consider and look how much salary you would base a teacher in a program in the district, keeping the students in the district, and putting some of these services in Plumborough for these students. I questioned this, and as I was looking through some of this, I really wanted to spend some time and look at Plumborough and the special education services. And I did reach out to some families in the community. And there are some questions. There are some parents that are sending their students to some outside placements that would love to have their children back into the district, because this is their home district, and they can be serviced here. Also, the state is coming down on how many children we are sending out to approve private schools. We really need to take a look at putting these students back into our district and providing the services, not only providing the services in our district, but the services that are in our district with highly qualified teachers can provide also training for other teachers in the district, especially behavioral analysis. We talk about safety in our schools, let's get some of those teachers and some of that staff in this school district. And I think we may see a change. That was the agenda item I wanted to talk about. I'm also here because many of you know, because I was here with my daughter, and this is what started my crusade in this district. I am very saddened to let you know that within the last couple of weeks, there have been two assaults in this school district, both which were videotaped once again on social media. I started this fight because that happened to my daughter, and I made a commitment to make sure that that was not going to happen again, and it's happened again. We need to take a look at the cell phone policies, the bring-your-own-device policies in this district. When there are sweeps going on and there's a lockdown in the district, there are text messages going out to students telling them that this is happening. We really need to take a look at this. These kids are smarter than us. You need to figure out how we can keep all students in this building safe. And once again, another video has gone viral. Another child is going to deal with not only the physical, but also the aftereffects of that assault. So, I'm asking you to look over that contract before you approve something like that. Talk to some professionals that are in the field of autism and also emotional disturbances. And let's not spend that amount of money. Let's figure out how we can provide services in our district. And also, please be aware of the safety, because I know I will continue my fight for safety in this district. Thank you.
Any other comments? The agenda, please.
Recommend approval of the following meeting minutes as listed. October 24, 2017, regular voting meeting minutes. November 8, 2017, special voting meeting.
I'll make that recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Holders in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
We have no athletic committee report. Education Committee, Mrs. Caldwell, chairperson.
Thank you, Dr. Yamnitsky. To address Mrs. Salerno's concern, I had concerns about this as well, and we didn't have a chance to discuss this at committee. I was working with Dr. Yamnitsky since committee, because that committee ended and didn't reconvene to try and get answers on this. And I came to the conclusion that we needed to take this off of the voting agenda tonight. It's nothing that Dr. Yamnitsky felt was urgent that we needed to do this month. So, we have moved that ahead to December for discussion, and Dr. Yamnitsky will share the specifics with the community. I, as well, have concerns about students who are educated out of the district that we could bring back in. We've been successful with that this year with our Life Skills 4 to 6 Program, which is a new addition for us. So, we were able to bring those young students back closer to their home, to their parents, and educate them in-house. So, I've asked Dr. Yamnitsky to put together a comprehensive list for the board members for next month of all entities that we work with contractually to service our students out of the district and/or in the district, that we're being, working with these separate entities to serve our students, and see how we can work forward into the future to bring these students back into the district. I think any parent would like their student to be two miles from home, rather than on the other side of Pittsburgh for a special service. So, we're going to be looking at that more intensely in the next month, as a starting point in the next month. So, that's where that entailed. I agree with Mrs. Salerno's comments, and that's why I did have it taken off the agenda for tonight. Thank you.
Recommend approval to accept the following grants. $481.27 donors choose for the high school for chapter books. $670.85 donors choose for Regency for STEM supplies. $258 from donors choose for high school library books. $167 from donors choose for Regency for subscriptions. And $150 from an anonymous donor to be used to pay off lunch accounts at Pivot Elementary.
On behalf of the committee, I'll make that recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I just wanted to thank all our staff members who worked hard and diligently on applying for these grants and obtaining them, and also to the anonymous donor. That was a nice act of kindness, especially with the Thanksgiving week upon us.
Eastern area schools.
Holders in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Just a very brief report. I wanted to thank the high schools, high school life skills class for inviting the board and other members to their Thanksgiving feast and celebration last week. It's a testament to how successful this program has become. It's a testament to how successful this program has become to see these students within our walls and the things that they can achieve with our fantastic staff. They're to be commended. Gina goes above and beyond, and we have great pairs in that class. And I was able to meet some of the parents who attended. So, once again, a wonderful event, and it's just a testament to how we can serve students who didn't use to be with us within our campuses and our walls and are now excelling. So, very exciting program. And I wanted to thank very much the staff on that. And also, just to remind parents, stay abreast with your guidance counselors as to what career professionals will be off of the side of the cafeteria in the boardroom to talk with our high school students during the lunch periods. Our guidance department's working diligently on not only getting the universities to come in, but getting skilled tradesmen and technical career representatives to come in and meet with our high school students. So, stay abreast with your guidance counselors on that and encourage your students to attend and meet with those professionals on their lunch period. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Eastern area schools, Mrs. Gallagher, representative, no report. Facilities Committee, Mr. Zucco, chairperson. Recommend approval to move forward with VEBH's first priority 2018 plan for construction and renovations as presented.
On behalf of the committee, I'd like to make that recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Yeah, I just want to make a comment. We paid $20,000 for Davis Demographics, and we need to make it a priority with the new board. We need to bring them back and get it right because why pay a service for a service, not get the service done and just throw them aside? So, we need to get accurate numbers, and we need to bring them back, is my opinion, before we make an informed decision.
Ellen, I believe you were going to do that, and I know Tim had reached out to them during the summer because the numbers weren't showing reflective of what was actually happening in our enrollment. Have you heard anything back from them?
Well, you are correct. We have, by contract, we have three more opportunities to bring them back. Given the fact that the district is preparing to redistrict, my recommendation is we save those for their assistance with our redistricting because they're going to GOCash all of our neighborhoods and our students and help guide us as to which children go where. I did submit to the board PDE's latest demographic study as well, so that you have that as a comparison.
My concern is that was the board direction to go back to VUBH, and they were supposed to come back in October. And I did, I thought all the students were already GE-coded.
No, not yet.
That's what we were told last time, that they were coded.
Well, we had asked for Davis Demographics to go back and look at the numbers because the kindergarten was off, which historically, it goes up and down almost every other year. If you look back at the data over the past 15 years, which we have that data available to us. And Dr. Glasspoel was going to have Davis Demographics come back to us with an updated projection into the future once the Pennsylvania Department of Education October 2nd cutoff date for enrollments and withdrawals for the school year passed. So, we never got that in October. Here we are at the November voting meeting, and we were to get that. Davis Demographics was to redo their projections based on our enrollment with the PDE cutoff date of October 2nd.
Right.
So, here we are, November 21st. I'm still waiting for the updated Davis Demographics number. They had told, Dr. Glasspoel had reported to us that they would get back to us and they would use that cutoff date rather than take a September 21st date or whenever our meeting happened to fall in September. So, I think we need those numbers. I personally will be voting no for this because this, we'll be short on funds. We're projecting that we have $4 million to spend out of those bond funds. But if we're keeping Regency Park at Old Holiday Park for another year, there's $880,000 that need to come out of those bond funds to keep that school open for another year. And this plan has us spending $4 million in the first priority phase. So, we're short $880,000. So, I can't support this plan.
And I agree with that too because the cost was like 1.5 to 1.8, and then a board member said, well, it might be two and a half. I mean, we only have $4 million, so we're spending the entire $4 million. So, it's over, you know, what we're projecting. Where are we going to fund the rest of the building?
Capital projects.
I mean, we don't even know. We didn't meet with VEBH like Sue Caldwell said. They were supposed to come back in October. And then the board was going to make a decision. I'm sorry, Davis Demographics. So, I mean, I think it's a fair, you know, facts that we're looking at just to say, you know, we want to make sure this is the right decision. I mean, if enrollment goes up, it goes up. I mean, I'm okay with that. We're going to have to do something. But if it's going down, I don't think we want to spend that money when we need so much repairs in our schools.
John, if I might ask a question because Mrs. Caldwell said that the $880,000 to keep Regency open will come out of the bond money. Is that accurate? Because I don't, I don't know.
We won't be paying for any expenses for Regency out of the bond, no.
We have in the past.
We stopped that a while ago.
Basically, we're going to come up with another $1 million.
I'm just, I'm asking John so I can get some clarification. So, what you're telling me is, is that that is not the plan?
Yeah, we don't pay for any costs out of Regency Park other than things that would be related to the capital project. So, any utilities, things that used to be paid for out of the GOB for Regency, transportation are no longer paid for out of the capital project fund at all.
So, we're changing precedent then?
We did, we did about six or seven months ago.
So, then that $880,000 is coming from?
Well, there's, you know, the building is, to close the building is probably going to be more than $880,000 in cost reductions if that's the case.
It's a million dollars you're going to make up in the 18, 19 budget by pushing redistricting and closing the school back a year.
We have numbers for the 18, 19 budget, and it's very disarming. It's concerning. And we knew that the 18, 19 school year was going to be the most difficult of all years to balance as far as balancing the budget. We are going to have to figure out solutions alternatively if we don't close that building. Part of our plan, you know, to just, was to close the building in terms of what we had to communicate to standard and poor. So, if we don't close it, we're going to have to find other ways to find measures to close that gap. So, it's.
It's going to be hard.
What's your estimate, John? What was the estimate that you put in the budget to close that school?
Well, right now, we had PASBO come, and you all know that. And we, Dr. Yamnitsky and I met with PASBO, and we ran numbers for them. And I think they confirm and agree to those numbers, and I think it's going to be about a $1.4 million swing by closing the building. But that number will be confirmed by PASBO at the December meeting. We're going to have a budget and finance committee.
Fourteenth.
On the 14th, and they're going to review this because that was one of the things we wanted them to review was, hey, what's the timeline for closing? Are there other alternative solutions? And, you know, what's our financials, what's our benchmarks and what's our comparables against other school districts? So, they're going to do a study, and I think what they'll do is confirm some of the notions that we have is, you know, we're in some financial trouble. We're going to have to do some things expense and revenue-wise to balance this budget for next year. Otherwise, we're going to be in deep, deep trouble.
So, we probably should hold off on this vote until we meet with PASBO?
I would, I would think that there's some logic behind that.
Can we hear from Mr. Zohrcheck?
He answered the question. He said, there's logic behind my question. He answered.
I mean, they're experts in the field. This is what they do. This is what they, they do this every day. I mean, and they're, you know, we had, I think, 120 years of experience between four members within PASBO. So, these guys have some credibility. They're concerned about our financial ability to really survive, you know? And, you know.
And they might even be bringing, aren't they going to be possibly bringing consolidation?
They may, but they also may say that you don't have enough space, you know, and that may come up too. Because I think that they really discredited Davis Demographics instantly because the data wasn't accurate. It was fairly inaccurate according to them.
That's why we got to bring them back, yeah.
Or we get our money back.
And they also, but they were also more, they also, PASBO people felt that the enrollment data from PDE was much more accurate. It's been revised. Dr. Yamnitsky sent it out to you, and it is fairly stable. The numbers are stable. I mean, there's not a huge decline like Davis Demographics is saying. They're saying that the numbers will decline by about 20 to 30 students for the next three years, but then we expect to see an uptick beyond that. So, I wouldn't say in 10 years from now, the number's fairly stable with where it currently is today. So, that's something that they're going to really analyze for us in terms of the space that we have and the space that we're going to need. So, I'm not 100% sure what's going to come out of that, but I think there's, they're going to do their homework, and they're going to present something.
It's going to be informative, yeah.
And I don't think that, I have to say that I don't think their first inclination is to say, yeah, you guys should do an addition. I think their thought was, you guys are in serious financial trouble. You've got $4 million in a pot. Try to do everything you possibly can to use that money to do as many capital projects as you can because you don't have a capital project budget built in your general fund. So.
Well, that's my next question too because this is just step one, and we have other steps because there's other schools that need work. So, where are we going to get the money for that next year or in two years for those improvements?
If we spend 1.8, we'd have some money left over to do other things. But we'd lose $1.8 million that could be used in other places if we don't do the expansion to the building. So, it's just a matter of, you know, again, setting those highest priorities and working down that list. Check, 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 check. So, if you don't do the project, you obviously have more money to be able to get more projects done. But you might need to do the project. It may come out that there's just not enough space in the buildings, and you may have to do it.
But if you don't need to do the project, you're also paying for something you won't need, and also, it's going to come out of our budget. We're going to have to find that $1.4 million next 18, 19.
And that's why I think it was really important that we found someone that was sort of independent and external and has expertise in the field to say, and also understanding of our financial situation too, that they could say, you know, what's in the district's best interest long-term. You know, like I said, I don't think their hope was to add, to do an addition. But as they started reviewing the data, the enrollment, it sort of started to come out that it may be a necessity. So, we're not sure where PASBO is going to leave off. They've asked us for a lot of information, a lot of data, going back to Plan Cones, just to get enrollment counts, space, size classrooms, to see if we can, you know, figure this out one way or the other. But.
I still would like to see Davis Demographics come back because we did pay them for service, and their service is off. I mean, their numbers, they need to explain to us exactly what happened and what their projection is and why, you know, we had more students throughout the school, K through 8, than what they projected.
Now, I have, I have, I have already reached out to them twice. I will send you the email that I received. It was some kind, their attempt at an explanation, and I pressed them further and have not heard back. So, I will press them again so that I can get you that information. I also wanted to add to what John said. He and I have spent many, many, many hours examining every piece of data we have related to this. And we both agree very strongly that we want to put in front of you the experts so that whatever decision you make, you can rely on the experts. And he's done a lot of extensive work getting those experts ready, giving them the information they need, and getting them ready to come. And that is why we set the meeting for December 14th. And John, you just want to explain who will be coming so that they know what to expect.
Wayne McCullough is the lead. He was also the lead on our transportation endeavor. I don't know a better word for it.
He's very successful.
He was successful, very successful.
Evaluation.
And he has brought, he'll bring with him, there were some different PASBO award winners in facility management. We're also have another business manager. His name is Richard Fantuzzi, well-respected within the Allegheny County community. So, we're going to have some people here that have been through multiple, multiple projects throughout the course of years. And they're just looking out in the best interest of the district, you know? They understand the bind that we're all in. They really do. Probably more so than people from the outside that don't understand the ins and outs of school business. At the same time, they understand that, you know, if you need to do a project, you need to do a project. There's no other way around that. And I tried to not influence their, just give them the data and let them come up to their own conclusions. In fact, whenever I hear the information on the 14th, it'll be the first time that I become aware of it as well. So, it should be interesting, to say the least.
So, I have a question. So, we paid for PASBO to do this study, to come in here and take a look at everything, and we're going to get that report on December 14th.
Yes.
So, I think it's irresponsible to have this up for a vote tonight. I need the data.
I agree with that, yeah. Okay, thank you for your comments. Okay, now, John, since everyone likes to put you on the spot, I'm going to go another thing. What did you say the savings would be when we would close this Holiday Park school, which is being used for Regency? $800,000?
It was 1.4 million.
1.4 million a year? So, if that would, in the future, we're going to be saving 1.4 million a year? So, that if we would have actually closed it and built an addition two years ago, we would have probably saved 2.8 million already. But we dragged our feet for two years. We stopped the construction of a new school, which I agreed with that because I thought it was extremely expensive to build a six-run school, three-run school rather instead of a four-run school, but any, two-run school instead of a three-run school. But anyhow, so if we would have done this two years ago, we would have saved 2.8 million. Plus, probably two years ago also, we probably had a lot more money left in this fund balance, didn't we? So, by dragging our feet and not doing anything, our fund balance on this general, this bond fund that we have left, and then we didn't save two and a half million, we lost opportunities. Is that correct? I just want to make sure that's correct.
That is correct, yes.
And according to all the studies now, some say our population was going to decrease, some says increase. Now, we're coming and saying it's going to be flatlined basically over the next 10 years. So, basically, we're trying to get this, even if we have the same exact number of students 10 years from now, we went from five elementary schools down to three elementary schools, and we're trying to say we shouldn't accommodate by putting an addition on for the, and get that saving and the same amount of students because we have the same amount of students. We didn't import those kids. We didn't export them. They were here all the time. They've just been misplaced. And we haven't really found them a permanent home. Is that correct?
I.
I just want to make sure because everybody wants to put you on the spot, so I'm going to put you on the spot too.
Yeah, I think everything you said is spot-on. There's not.
Thank you. So, wait, I want to hear what John has to say.
There's not one thing that I could argue about that. We, for every year that goes by and we don't do something with that building, we lose the opportunity to find reductions in costs. Absolutely. There's no question about that. The issue is space, of course. That's going to be the issue, is whether or not there's enough space within the existing buildings or are we willing to think outside of our own mindsets here and come up with other solutions? And I think that's what PASBO is sort of suggesting is, yeah, there might be a way to do this, but the way that you want to do it may not be exactly the way, the way that, you know, the public is going to want you to do it. You're going to have to face some pushback. And are you willing to accept that pushback as a part of our reality? Or do we want to add on to the building? So, they might even propose that as an option as well.
And the public is paying for it.
Well, and I.
Exactly.
And I have a comment, Rich, because one thing that you left out was, is the original cost was $13 million.
Thank you.
Between, you know, the six, moving it to sixth to eighth grade, reconfiguring or however different people felt, fifth grade in one building, we were looking at $13 million, and our school district can only borrow so much. Last time I asked John, we had a cap at $19 million, and we can no longer borrow money. We cannot get a loan. In fact, I don't know if we can get a loan now. So, we took a $10 million bond, spent most of it because we had no money to buy other, to use, we had to use that bond to buy it because we had no money. We would have been in really bad shape because, you know, the only reason we were using that bond is we didn't have the money. So, to say we're saving 1.4 million, we were going to spend $13 million. I just, I just think things just didn't come together. So, I just want to point out that was a big step. And, you know, the district can only borrow so much money, and also, we need other things fixed because we have not been fixing our buildings and there's things that need done. And we want to keep sustaining what we have in this district. That's the most important thing right now, is to do better, sustain and do better.
Well, that's true, but don't forget that the original estimate was, oh, I think, 13-something. Then we said, hey, that, we can't afford that. And I think we got it down to like seven-something. And then we said, now, let's go down to bare bones. What is the minimum we can get? And that's, to me, that shows that the process worked, but we shouldn't have dragged it on for two years. And that's, to me, that shows that the process worked, but we shouldn't have dragged it on for two years.
And I have one other thing about that as well. When I came on the board, Old Holiday Park was closing, Adelaide, however you wanna, the folks wanna word that. And there was this large savings we were gonna have. I believe it was eight or nine hundred thousand dollars. We're gonna have this huge savings by closing a building. The reality is, we're all talking about a number that probably isn't gonna happen, because we didn't lose an administrator. Uh, and you keep going down the line. We didn't really save that much when we closed that other building. And I forget what the numbers are, and I don't have them with me tonight, but the, there was not, not much of a savings in any way, shape, or form. So we're talking about a number that is, if you were to eliminate X amount of teachers, X amount of support staff, X amount of administrators, and so on. And honestly, and you're looking at two, the transportation is part of that number. These kids were never, we didn't have to pay for very much transportation to begin with, with regency. So there's another inflated number. But we never saved that much when we consolidated before. That was the big selling point. We're gonna save all this money, and the, and, and again, I came in on the tail end of that, and it never was saved.
John, can, can you speak to that at all?
I can, absolutely. That's, that's totally, um, that's a, an excellent point. Yeah, that's an excellent point. There's one thing to have a plan, and there's another thing to execute the plan. It's one thing to say that you're gonna reduce staff, it's another thing to actually do it. It's not an easy thing to do. I mean, it's, it's something to, to say, but when it's, push comes to shove and reality sinks in, and we have to do it, we have to, to stick to that. So that's an, an important piece of this, you know, is, is are we gonna be committed to, to do the things that we need to do that, that come with that savings? And, and there's small utility reductions, there's small garbage disposal, there's small things. They add up to, you know, maybe about 150, 200 thousand dollars. And you'll see that in the report from PASBO, but the biggest thing, and you all know this, and everybody knows, is the staffing, staffing. That's where, that's where you're gonna get the bulk of your savings annually, is to be able to take, take, take some of the staff that you have, and, and put them in the other buildings, and figure out ways, creative ways, to not have to replace people when they retire, to hopefully not furlough, but that is something that has to be talked about, is to stick to, to the plan and implement the plan. It's not easy. I mean, we're, we're talking about, we're talking about the livelihood of, of people, the, the community, you know. We're talking about hard decisions. I mean, that's what we're up against. And so that 1.4 million dollars is, is based on what we could do, if everything falls into place. It's a good point. Uh, the reality is, it may not be exactly what we hope. Because there's certifications that you have to cross, there's, there's a lot of different possible scenarios that you have to tackle as you go through this process. But, um, but right now, we're a critical mass. I mean, we're, we're facing a five million dollar deficit for next year with no, really, two million dollars in a fund balance that, that'll help bridge that gap, but then after that, no help. So, we've gotta find ways to, to be able to do this without destructing the educational program, and without destructing people's ability to wanna live here. And it's gonna be a, a, it's gonna be a challenge. I mean, it is gonna be a challenge, this, this next year's budget. So, the fourteenth is gonna lead a lot of that discussion, and a lot of the direction that we're going. And it's gonna be uncomfortable. Uh, but, but we, you know, Dr. Yamninsky and I thought it would be best to put experts in front of you, to give you the same message, to confirm the information that we've been giving you, and maybe even disagree with us. But hopefully, if we have these, these disagreements and this confrontation, we can come to a better place, and, and get to a point where we all have some sort of agreement on how we plan to go forward. Because if we leave things as they are, we're not gonna be here in, in a year, you know, two years from now.
One of the things that has, has frustrated me since my, my short time on this board is the great ability we have to talk past one another. And if you notice, John, every time you said something, somebody from a diff, a, a different vantage point agreed with you. So, there are many things here that are right all at the same time, right? And so, because we have so many different issues that are impacting our district all at the same time. Yeah, we don't have any money, or we're actually short of money, without question. Yeah, we need to close a school, because where they're at is an untenable situation. But if we move those kids other places, we don't have the space for them. And you could go down the line of any number of issues that, you know, all come together and just don't make a good situation, and really don't necessarily have a good end result. But, time and time again, what I've heard is, again, you know, folks with their feet dug in, just talking past one another, instead of saying, "All right, you know what, you're right, and I'm right. What, what's the compromise position here?" You know, you know what I'm saying? So, that, that's, that's been a frustrating, been a frustration of mine. Because I, I, I don't know the right way forward, especially, you know, when we know that we, if we close that building, where are those kids gonna go? Right? We, I mean, that's an issue right now. If you close it come November, come, come August, where are they going? 'Cause they can't cleanly fit, fit within the buildings that we had. So where do they go? But at the same time, it's absolutely right. If you keep the building open, then that's money, whether it's 800,000, whether it's 1.4, or as Mr. Stepnick has said, it quite possibly could be less than that. So, you know, so how does that all play out? That becomes an issue. I feel like I would have felt better about this whole situation had the PASBO folks come to speak to us prior to the meeting that we had last week. I think that would've been much, a much better situation for all of us to have made an informed decision. And I don't know why it didn't necessarily come down that way.
I think I pushed a month, that, that was the problem.
Right.
We, we were trying to get a discount from that price, and that delayed us a month.
And see, and that's, and that's, and that's kinda, again, that's kinda par for the course around here, and, and again, that's frustrating to me. And I think Rich has talked about it, Davis Zuko's talked about it. We keep putting stuff off. You know, folks keep putting it off this time, this time, this time, and, and the cliche thing is to say is keep kicking the can down the road. After, why are you kicking yourself in the behind? Because, again, folks need, you know, we need to make some decisions. So I, I, I really felt like, had we had, I would like to have been able to have this, this set of information, 'cause it sounds like it's gonna be much more thorough, in-depth, and in detail, to, to really talk about whether or not what the next steps forward are. 'Cause I thought that as a board, we made a good decision when we asked VEBH to come back to us with different priorities and a timeline that we had talked about, and they provided us. And I think it's also worth noting that the timeline that they provided us, and the outline that they gave us, had all of the projects that we had asked to be done, getting done, out of the money. And I think that's important. And that's one of the reasons why I voted for that last time, is because the things that we said we wanted to get done, be it the, the, the addition to the repairs on the roof, to all those other things, were paid for. But now we're talking about looking at things in a lot more of a global picture, and incorporating all the other pieces of data and whatnot, I think that makes a, a big difference. And as it relates to, to Davis demographics, I, I'm really tired of hearing about Davis demographics. I haven't said much on it, um, but I'm tired of hearing about it. Um, and I think Dr. Yamninsky, um, I think we should follow her lead as the superintendent, and she says that she doesn't wanna use the three other times for them to come back, because she, as the educational leader, and the expert in this situation, wants to wait to use them other times. And I think we need to honor and respect that. Whether or not we have some feeling about whether or not they did the job right, this, that, the other, previously, that's what she's recommending, and she's recommending it because she has a vision and a plan for where it is that she wants to go forward with that. And I think we need to respect that and honor that, as it relates to that.
So in the same token, and I agree, Reggie, um, that you wanna honor, you know, people, Dr. Yamninsky, but John Selhortak is saying that he believes the board should wait the vote on this tonight until we hear from PASBO, period.
I'm not saying that necessarily. What I'm saying is that, what I'm saying is that if you vote on it, it's not gonna, it's, it's not good or bad, or one way or the other. You can still vote on it and, and not take any action on it, you know, if, if, if you choose to do that.
Why would you vote on something knowing that if PASBO comes in and, and gives us a recommendation, it's gonna happen in fourteen, you know, in less than three, four weeks? I mean, why would a board do that?
I'm saying that if you go forward with it, and PASBO comes in, and if you vote on it today and it passes, and PASBO comes in and gives you a little bit of a different information, then, then you just tell them to stop. You know, you just tell VEBH, "I know what you're saying."
I guess, but I mean...
Well, one thing, one thing to understand is what, what this vote does is it, it is enabling VEBH to begin moving forward, and giving them permission to get started. Do remember though, that we pay for each thing that they do individually. So, while you can certainly rescind anything that you want, the purpose of tonight's vote was to say to Dan, "Okay, go ahead and get started," because he has a timeline that he wants to, that he needs to live by.
And that, and the one thing I'm gonna add with that, that I should say, the reason why I, I didn't necessarily say you shouldn't vote on it is because there's other parts of this project that if you vote on it, you'll get that process started. The vestibule was being one of those. There's a couple other different things that are, that are scheduled beyond the 1.8 million dollar addition.
And I don't, I don't actually agree with the vestibule, vestibule, um, so I'd like to, I'm not gonna vote on it. I'd like to have more conversation on that, so.
I would as well. When I came up and signed in for the Thanksgiving dinner, and asked the security professionals at our desk what they thought of the plan, no one had consulted them. That, to me, that's appalling, and, and somebody didn't, you know, VEBH didn't, I don't know why no one asked the person who sits at the front desk what their thoughts were on their, on the, um, changes to the vestibule, but there was no input taken from the individuals who would be using that facility every day. So I think the ball was dropped on that, and that's another reason I won't support this.
And I agree with that, because when I did go to speak to VUBH for two seconds, um, I did have a couple questions about the vestibule. And I think, I think Sue's right. I think the person that sits up there should have some input too, so, you know.
I believe they said they were going to do that, that as they continued down their process in their presentation to us, was that they were going to, this was just an idea, an average cost, and, and part of a plan that we asked them for, but as we went forward, they would be a part of that conversation. Because we saw their draft of a plan, it doesn't solidify that that's what we're getting, and that's what our staff is gonna have to do, and that's how it's supposed to work, and that's how much it's gonna cost. That, that's a beginning of a plan. My reason for supporting this, yes, John, is that there's other, um, projects attached to this as a priority checklist that this board, the majority of this board, had given that direction to go do. But, again, for somebody that was here when we did that original borrowing, you know, it, it's easy to say, "Well, we pay them for every little thing that they do," but we've already wasted a million dollars of that bond when we stopped the regency project. That's already been gone. So I'm fine paying VEBH a little bit of money to move this forward, because a million dollars of that 10 million dollar bond, which we didn't get the full 10 million to begin with, was wasted on Kimball. And as I go forward and look this, and I, and I keep going back to this, and I asked it when the regency project was stopped, there are terms to this bond. And 85% of the bond, at least you need to have a plan to have spent it within the three years, or how you're going to spend it. We can't just continue sitting stable here and saying, "We're just gonna wait for more information. We'll wait, and we'll wait, and we'll move it another month." There's a timeline attached to this, and I am not willing to put this borough to be subject to an IRS anything, and, and have that be taxed, because we didn't move something forward in good faith, knowing we have additional projects we need to do.
I just can't see, you're talking about a 60,000 dollar vestibule, the cost, and it could be more, it could be less. I mean, and then 1.8, Rich is talking 2.5, you're saying 1.5. I mean, this is just all over the place. And what happens if we don't have enough money to finish the construction? I just, I don't get where you're going with this. I just understand that we wanna make a decision. I've been saying that for a while too. But I think John is recommending to speak to PASBO. I say spend no more money out of that bond. We bought a bus garage, we bought a, a lot of things out of that bond. You know, obviously, we need money in this school district. So just to say we're gonna move forward, have VEBH start, um, charging us to move forward on this project when PASBO might have a different recommendation, I don't think that's very fair to the taxpayers and people.
If I'm, if I'm not mistaken, there are projects, there are that in phase one, that can be started irrespective of what PASBO says on December the fourteenth. So again, I, I, I think, uh, Mrs. Stepnick makes a good point in terms of, at the, at a minimum, approving this tonight does get us moving forward on the other projects. The superintendent and the, and the business director can then, they have their discretion to say, "Okay, VEBH, move forward with this, this, and this, and we're just gonna hold off until we get more information about this, this, and this." But I, I did hear John say this, and, and, and Mrs. Stepnick has said this as well. There's, there's some time sensitivity to this, that I think we certainly need to consider as we, as we ponder this vote, um, and, and whether or not we move forward with it. I, I, I just think that's something that we have to consider, consider as well. There are other projects that are, that are part of this, that would be better for us to get started on sooner rather than later.
The fact that it matters, though, you can't, you shouldn't go ahead with a project, first of all, you don't have the money for, and also the fact that, uh, you don't have, we never got accurate numbers. We don't have accurate, we don't have accurate numbers.
This is getting the accurate numbers, Steve. I mean, we're not moving forward with anything. All we're doing is having VHB, VHB, VEBH give us more money. Or, I'm sorry, give us more details on these projects.
We should wait and have, we paid for our service through Davis.
We've been waiting for two years, Steve. It's all, every month, it's delayed, delayed, we need more information, it's delayed, delayed, delayed.
Well, we listen, we listen to you and Sal, we would've done 16 million dollars for a roof.
You would've listened to me and Sal and Richard three years ago, we wouldn't be in this mess. We had a solution three years ago.
We weren't on the board.
But we were voted against it.
We were not on the board three years ago.
But you've been continuing the same path that put us in this situation.
We are.
Yes.
How?
You keep voting against all this stuff. You keep delaying, delaying, delaying these projects. This should've been done by now. These kids have been waiting for three years, and every month, we just sit here and delay, delay, delay.
Because we've gone to...
And you've been harping on these issues for months, about the, the, uh, O block roof. You've been harping on that for months, and this isn't part of the project, and you don't wanna move forward.
No, I agree with that. I do agree that we could do the vestibule. Because I, I, I wanna listen to what PASBO has to say regarding the VEBH starting the new construction project.
All those things can be true at the same time.
Modus is another delay tax.
All those things can be...
Just vote, just vote.
All those things can be true at the same time.
I say just vote, take a vote.
Well, I mean, wait, I'm sorry, I, I thought I was saying something. Folks wanna talk about taking the vote, whatnot.
You were making what I was saying.
Again, I'm just saying, you know, again, all of those things can be true at the same time, right? So we, you can still take the vote and move forward with things like the roof and whatnot. Fine, you, you don't, you want that to be broken out, okay, but that's not the situation we got. What we got is, is it's all together as a package. If we wanna move forward with it, which I think we should, then yeah, I think, you know, I, I think as I stand here talking, I think I'm gonna support it. But I certainly understand why folks might wanna say, "Let's hear from, from, from PASBO." That's a smart decision, but that doesn't necessarily mean that you don't make this decision. Again, all those things can be true at the same time. One of the more frustrating aspects of this board is, is that folks just think they got their truth, and everybody else is just as wrong as the day is long.
But, but to say that, like, but, 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 but it's true. Like, Steve, the other day, at last meeting, he brought up about it's gonna cost the district money not to read, to, to, um, not to redistrict this year, so how are we gonna make up the 1.4 million dollars? Everybody started focusing on something else, he said, except for the question he asked. I mean, these are questions that we're faced with. We, we're supposed to be educating kids, and that is our main job, to give them the best education so they have a future. So when we're looking at budget deficits, I mean, this is important, this is an important decision.
You're right.
You can't, you can't spend, spend, and spend, and then say, you know, "You can't cut any programs, or you can't do things differently." We're not in that situation right now. And whatever happened in the past, it's done. We, we are stuck where we are today, and our goal is to sustain and to give these kids the best education, not just from Plum, but in another school district too, so they can compete with them. When they move forward and, that's my goal, that's my only goal. When I got on this board, it wasn't to have a grudge against anybody, it was to make this school district better, that was better than when I, when I got on the board. That's what I try to do every single time.
Now that everything's been said three times, can we vote, please?
Well, wait, no. I, I, as chairman of committee, I wanna make my comment. This will probably be part of my report, since we've covered everything so in-depth. Two, two things I have to make sure we understand, and I'm not trying to be picky about this, but, Vicki, you said we didn't do all these other projects, and we put things off. No, we did do those other projects, that's where a lot of this money went. We didn't jeopardize any safety, safety, we didn't put projects off and say, "We know we're not gonna do them." That's where part of that 10 million dollars went. Second thing, part I think, and Reggie's kinda right, and we're talking past each other, really, this first priority has an addition on to Center Elementary, and that is the biggest, I think, contention, because it's really a toss-up between, do you wanna use modular, or do you wanna use construction? or do you want to use construction? Now, given the point that our, uh, what's the word I'm looking for here? No, not our predicament. The number of, of students enrollment, our enrollment is going to basically flatline, so it's not going down, which would say we would need something temporary right now because it's going to go down and we shouldn't spend the money on something permanent. The fact that they are going to stay the same means that we should have something permanent. Now, this is solid. So the, the second item in this first priority was additional parking paving, which no matter which alternative we would have used, would be about the same if I remember VBEH comments. The third item, almost a million dollars, is the O Block roof improvements, O Block, next one, sewer line repairs and high school security vestibule. Some of those items are not very big items, some are, but the only real big discrepancy is the very first line in that fourth priority, which is an addition versus, and I guess the alternative would be modular. But again, since our student population is going to be about the same it is now, I don't see a, a temporary solution for something that's going to be stable and permanent. So that's my final, that would be my report at the end here. So if you, now I think we're ready to vote.
Ready to vote.
Let's have a roll call.
Dr. Hickman?
Yes.
Mrs. Rossler?
Yeah.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Doc?
No.
Mrs. Stepnick?
Yes.
Zuko?
Yes.
Mrs. Caldwell?
No.
Mr. Dowdell?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Your report, uh, Mr. Zuko?
That was it. I think we covered everything. There's not much left to say.
Okay, Finance Committee, Mrs. Stepnick, chairperson. Recommend approval of the general fund bill payment for October 2017.
On behalf of the committee, I'd like to make that recommendation. Second.
Okay, back there.
Johnny.
Is there a second? Um, motion and second, uh, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval of the GOB payment for November 2017.
On behalf of the committee, I'd like to make that recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Mrs. Stepnick, do you have a report?
We did not meet, so there is no report.
Okay, thank you. Food Service Committee, Dr. Hickman, do you have a report?
Did not meet, no report.
Forbes Road CTC, Mr. Rogers.
Yes, just a quick item here, uh, two quick items. The current enrollment is 715 total students, that's full time and half time, and on November 7th, the Forbes Trail Facility was host to the occupational advisory, local advisory and Perkins participation meetings. And what that was, was a group of 168 guests of various, to various meetings throughout the day. Uh, the focus of the meetings was to build relationships within the educational, the business and industrial communities. The meetings were meant to strengthen ties, garner support for the CTC and help keep current with industry trends. They exchanged ideas and community involvement was well done. That's it, thank you.
Thank you. Intergovernmental Committee, Mrs. Caldwell?
No report.
Thank you. Legislative Policy Council, Mrs. Stepnick?
No report.
Personnel Committee, Mr. Zuko, chairperson.
Recommend approval to rescind the September 26th, 2017 motion to hire Braxton Magwood substitute bus driver.
On behalf of the committee, I'd like to make that recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval of the resignation of Diane Nizer, food service worker at Plum Senior High School, retroactive to November 10, 2017.
On behalf of the committee, I'd like to make that recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval to hire Caitlin Minig as a staff nurse at Center and Regency Park Elementary Schools at the contracted rate with an effective date to be determined by central administration.
On behalf of the committee, I'll make that recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval to hire Caitlin Minig as a staff nurse at Center and Regency Park Elementary Schools at the contracted rate with an effective date to be determined by central administration.
On behalf of the committee, I'll make that recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval to hire the following full-time custodians effective December 1, 2017. James Miller, Pivot Elementary School, Joseph Pierce, Plum Senior High School.
On behalf of the committee, I'll make that recommendation also.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval to hire the following full-time custodians effective December 1, 2017. James Miller, Pivot Elementary School, Joseph Pierce, Plum Senior High School.
On behalf of the committee, I'll make that recommendation also.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval to hire Connor Bernazoli, part-time custodian at the contracted rate with an effective date to be determined by central administration.
On behalf of the committee, I'll make that recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval of the following maternity slash paternity leaves. Phil Beatty, technology education teacher at O Block Junior High School, beginning on or about January 15th, 2018 through January 24, 2018. Mara Smith, English long-term substitute teacher at Plum High School, beginning on or about May 12, 2018 through the end of the 2017-18 school year.
On behalf of the committee, I'd like to make those recommendations.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Zuko, do you have any other personnel?
Uh, the only thing I would like to say in personnel is, uh, this will be the final meeting for Mr. Reginald Hickman, uh, Mrs. Michelle Stepnick, Mrs. Michelle Gallagher and Mr. Kevin Dowdell. I'd like to thank them all for their service. I mean, it's obvious, this is not an, an, an easy job and we don't even get it paid for it, so, uh, it's, it's a tough job that you, uh, aren't always appreciated for and half of the people love you and half the people hate you for it. So just to put up with a, a, a short term like Reggie did, uh, or a full term like, uh, Michelle and Michelle did, or to put up with 12 years of this like Mr. Dowdell has done, I just would like to thank on behalf of the board and I hope the rest of the board members for the service that they put in and, uh, I wish them well.
Thank you.
Thank you. On behalf of the Athletic Committee, uh, Mrs. Gallagher is not here. Do I have someone who will?
Mrs. Caldwell is on the committee.
I'll make those recommendations.
Okay. Recommend approval to accept the following volunteer coaches for the 2017-18 season. Joseph Sitrano, junior high volunteer assistant coach. Shelley Garrus, senior high volunteer assistant gymnastics coach.
On behalf of the committee, I'll make those recommendations.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval to hire the following 2017-18 coaches. John Forsythe, senior high assistant softball coach, stipend of $3,789. Senior Staff Sergeant James Everly, senior high assistant wrestling coach, stipend Jake Uhas, junior high assistant wrestling coach, stipend $2,928.
On behalf of the committee, I'll make that recommendation.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Policy Committee, Mrs. Rossler, chairperson. Do you have a report?
I do not.
Safe Schools Committee, Mrs. Rossler, chairperson, do you have a report?
I have a short report. I just wanted to touch base, um, to give the community information and make them aware. CPR, we're looking, the district is looking into getting staff trained to be CPR trainers so they can train our students. Um, the district's goal is to have all ninth graders certified by the end of this school year. Uh, I wanted to touch base on the K-9 officer. Officer Temple and Voda visited Center Elementary School as part of their Red Ribbon Week. Officer Temple presented to grades K through three and four through six to talk about the work he and Voda do to keep the community safe. The pair demonstrated how Voda finds, seeks, seeks, finds and communicates when something of interest is found. As always, the students love seeing and interacting with the members of our Plum Borough Police Department. So I thank Officer Temple and Voda for coming to Center Elementary. Drug education, this is extremely important. We are working, using the DEA in discovery education, they use Operation Prevention, it's drug education that we use in our schools. We have course descriptions and I have it here in front of me, but instead of reading it all, um, I'm going to recommend that, um, parents that are concerned and want to know what we do in the district as far as, um, talking to your students regarding drug use, um, the different types of drugs, all the way from third grade to, um, 12th grade, you can go onto, um, operationprevention.com. So that'd be www dot operationprevention.com and it lists what exactly we do for grades like three through six, would participate in, um, 40-minute lessons. So it outlines what we do in our school district, so I recommend that again, parents go onto Something else I wanted to touch on, vaping in our school district. We're currently working on getting resources, speakers about the danger, to come to our schools to talk about the dangers of vaping for elementary students, our junior high students and our high school students. So hopefully they will be in, um, somebody will be in speaking to our students because I do understand it's a problem in our schools. Tipline, this is just a reminder for the parents who feel uncomfortable reporting activity that you can choose to report to the tip line and remain anonymous. There's a phone number you can call, I believe it's 412-798-tips. Mr. Brewer?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you. It's easy to remember.
1677.
Okay. Um, and also you can go onto our district website and you can click on the link and you can file a report. But I know times people come up to school board members and they want to tell us something and a lot of times they don't want us to know, you know, the administrators to know, you know, that they're telling us something because retaliation on their students. They, the community needs to start, start using that tip line, not to tell on someone, but that tip you might make might save somebody's life. I mean, you know, I, I really recommend you do it for the right reason and, and, and understand that it's important and we're giving you that resource. So, um, these are our students, I just, you know, I ask parents, use that over possibly calling, you know, board members. My job is sitting here today as a board member, it's not when I'm at home. So remember that, you know, there's administrators and we also have a tip line, so that's all I have to say in closing.
It's anonymous.
Anonymous, yeah. Whether you call it in or you, um, you know, you report it on the website, so that's all I have to say, thank you.
Thank you.
Good report.
Transportation Committee, Mr. Rogers, chairperson, do you have a report?
Yes, uh, just a quick item. Light Up Night will be next Thursday from, at 11:00 November 30th, beginning at 5:30 with events until 9:00 PM. As there will only be handicap parking and no other parking at the event, free shuttles will be provided by the school district. 10 shuttles from four different locations will begin runs at 4:30 and run to the end of the event. The four locations are Plum High School, lower lot, St. John the Baptist Church on Unity Center Road, the Public Works Department on Old Mine Road in Renton, and the Amplified Church on O Block slash Salzburg Roads. Thank you.
Thank you. And if I may, before, um, Mr. Dowdell presents his last president's report, I just wanted to take a minute on behalf of the school district to thank those individuals who have served, um, the children, the, the staff and the community members, um, for so long and so well. I just wanted to take a minute, um... Dr. Hickman, on behalf of the school district, um, I have a certificate of recognition for outstanding service and commitment to the student, staff and community of Plum. And Mr. Dowdell, from the Plum Borough School District, certificate of recognition for outstanding service and commitment to the students, staff and community of Plum. Thank you. And for Mrs. Stepnick from the Plum Borough School District, a certificate of recognition for outstanding service, commitment to the students, staff and community of Plum.
Thank you, Dr. Mirinsky. Yeah, I'll start my president's report, this will be my final president's report. First off, I'd like to congratulate the girls' low pitch softball team for their undefeated season. This is the second undefeated season in the, in the past, uh, three years, so I'd like to, um, congratulate those, those girls on their, um, great season. I'd also like to congratulate the student athletes who participated in the fall sports. We had three, uh, student features this evening and, uh, I think they've been all outstanding. I'd like to comment that 84% of our student athletes achieved honor roll status, so I'd like to gra, congratulate all those students that, uh, received that honor roll status. The winter athletics are in full swing. I'd like to wish the athletic, uh, athletic students in, in the winter sports the best of luck. I also like to recognize the GLA who raised, uh, $525 for breast cancer in October. Once again, our Plum High School will be collecting new unwrapped toys that will be donated to the Toys for Tots and share with the kids in need in our community. They will be collecting toys from now until December 7th. I think they dropped off the toys here at the high school and I think on December 7th will be Stuff a Bus event to finalize that, uh, collection of the toys. So please be generous and, and donate any toys you may want to contribute to these needy kids. Uh, this past month, I attended the Make-A-Wish benefit dinner and I'd like to thank all the people that made generous donations to the event and like to thank the student musicians that provided the entertainment for the evening. The, uh, as Mrs. Lloyd la, uh, mentioned last, uh, meeting, that their string group would be entertaining the evening. It was, it was quite entertaining that evening. Plum's Make-A-Wish is the number one fundraising district in the world. It has raised over $837,000 in the last 17 years. Their 18th annual telethon is scheduled for, for Thursday, December 21st and will air on the YouTube station and the Community Access Channel on the 22nd. The Plum Boroughs, the Plum Borough School District, uh, is beginning a search for a new superintendent that will be supported by the Pennsylvania School Board Association. The open application period is planned for December 4th to January 15th, 2018. The posting will be available on our website and if you know any interested candidates, please inform them of our, uh, posting on the website. Additionally, we invite any participates in a survey to help identify the key attributes desired in, in the next superintendent. The link to this survey and further information will be available on the district's website early in December. Thank you in advance for your submissions. Some important upcoming events, on, on Thursday, November 30th, as, uh, Mr. Rogers suggested, from 5:30 to 9 will be our Christmas at Plum Creek. Uh, it's the second annual Holiday Tree Lighting Festival at Plum Creek Park and, uh, Mr. Rogers gave you the information on the shuttle buses for the event. There'll be a lot of, uh, family activities that'll play, take place during the event, including entertainment, food, horse darn carriage rides, live reindeer and a special visit from Santa. Keystone exams will start on December 4th through the 15th. On December 30, 21st will be the first day of winter. The 22nd through the 2nd will be our Christmas break. And there'll be musical, numerous musical concerts in December. You can check the school calendar for dates and times. And as always, you can check our website for more information. As I mentioned, this is my last meeting as a school director. My term will end in a couple of weeks. Over the last 12 years, I have been, I have seen the good, the bad and the ugly. But when I come down to it, when I see the successful outcomes of the students and their achievements, it seems all worth the time, devotion and commitment in serving our community. I am honored that our community entrusted me to serve our district for the past three terms. When I decided to run 12 years ago, I did not have a personal agenda or any special interest. I simply wanted to serve our community to the best of my ability. I commented, I committed myself to serve the people of Plum with a focus on improving our education system without overburdening our taxpayers. At times, I had to make unpopular and difficult decisions. Sometimes it meant making cuts, other times it meant raising taxes. Neither of which are popular and in doing so upset half the people in our community. I had to endure shoutings and threats from the public and even other school board members simply by having a difference in opinion. I could have taken the easy way out and let others make the difficult decisions, but that would not resolve the issues we face. Occasionally, we hear from people to do more with less. That may work for a while, but eventually we will do less with less. I am honored, I have honored the sunshine law by keeping public information public and confidential information confidential. I never engaged in gossip and social media or, and I kept student information private. I had the pleasure of witnessing all three of my children graduate from Plum. And to this day, they tell me that they received a good education here at Plum. They were well-prepared for college and they all have successful careers. And I want to thank Plum School District for, for their achievements. When people ask me, was it worth it? I think of all the harassment, the bickering and long hours and I wonder. However, when I see the students, whether at musicals, concerts, academic awards, sporting events, graduation or other events, I have to say, yes, it was worth it. But now it's time to move on. I'd like to acknowledge the previous school directors, superintendents and administrators that I had the pleasure to serve over the past 12 years. I'd like to send my regards to Andrews and Price, who've served as our solicitor for, for these years. I think they're the only ones that have been there almost as long as I have. I want to wish our students, teachers, administrators and all the support staff the best of luck. And I'd like to thank the people of Plum to allow me to serve our community for the past 12 years. At this time, I'd like to recognize Mrs. Stepnick for her four years of service to our community. I know she has had, she's been very passionate and dedicated to the success of our students. Additionally, I'd like to recognize Dr. Hickman for his time he has spent on the board. Although it's only been a few short months, I think his insight and experience has brought a different perspective to the board and he has been an asset to our district. So I want to thank you both. And I believe at this time, Mrs. Stepnick would like to make some farewell comments.
Kevin, I first want to say that it's been an honor to represent the students of our district these past four years. They have been my sole focus. While we may have spent the last three years of our community constantly being shown in a bad light, we still had so many great successes. What transpired was something I never thought in my lifetime would have happened. With that said, I never lost focus of my main reason to be here, the students. One student closest to my heart became a target, my son. People stood in front of us saying, our children should be ashamed of us. That comment was the lowest of low. My son is extremely proud of his mother. I will leave this board knowing that I followed the law, the 14th Amendment of the United States Constitution, one of the very things we are sworn to uphold as elected officials. Some of my most proudest moments as a board member was getting to be a part of celebrating the successes of our students. I tried hard to attend as many student functions as possible. These are the successes that should have been in the news. I was proud to have supported and voted for the second school resource officer at a time when our district needed it most, this position was cut. It's my hope that we will see that second S R O with the new grant that was just awarded to the district for that position. Other accomplishments that stick out in my mind are the one-to-one iPad program, instituting our life skills program and watching that program grow and flourish. I'm excited to see the expansion as part of the conversation with the new center addition. I know that it was part of the regency conversation as well. It's critical that our student, our district's most challenged students are given the opportunity to interact with their peers. Despite pathetic newspaper ads with false information, I have always supported the regency families and their fight for their children. I still to this day believe a new regency is what was best for our district and it's sad when a group of students gets used in a political game. I would be remiss if I didn't highlight my legislative advocacy work. Plum Borough is just one of hundreds of districts throughout Pennsylvania. And I thank my fellow board members for supporting me in that role that as I traveled to Harrisburg many a times, my own personal time and money to promote our district and have our voices be heard, and they have been. I have always looked as my role as a board member to be one that makes the best decisions for our district. The district, for those who are confused in what that means, is our students, our education programs, athletics, staff, facilities and community. I have always been fair in my decisions and I've supported staff to ensure they have the tools they need to make our kids successful. I questioned them when I felt was important and necessary and I did it without any humiliation. Every decision I made was with a students-first focus. The new board will have its share of challenges. I wish them the best of luck as they face them. I'm not going away. I am a parent of this district and will remain active at meetings and within my school. I hope people will come into this without agendas and truly continue with a students-first focus. The success of our students and community truly depends on it. Finally, I have to thank my colleagues who I've spent the last four years getting to know and working with. Our conversations and debates were passionate and many a times, great compromise came out of them. And I hope we see that, more of that in the future. And most important, I thank my family, Terry, Alex and Ashley. They have been my rock as they have lived through the ups and downs because we are all Plum Proud. Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you. Dr. Hickman, would you like to make any closing comments?
Certainly. I'll be brief since my time on the board was in itself brief. First, I would like to just thank the, the board members. You guys selected me to serve out Mr. Kala, Kala's term. And I appreciate it that, hopefully I fulfilled the expectations that you guys had for me. I always wanted to make sure that I came at this job in a professional manner and as you said, Mr. Dowdell, use my experience and insight as an educator to inform the decisions that I made on this board. I'd also like to thank the community. It was a great opportunity for me to serve in the community and for the citizens of Plum. It was a fulfilling, enlightening and yet oftentimes frustrating experience. Hopefully, the new board, when they get sworn in in a few weeks, we'll be able to work together in a professional manner to advance policies and decisions for the good of students and families. I think sometimes that can get lost in, in some of the banter that goes back and forth and some of the decisions that get, get made. But this was truly a, a new experience for me, a very good experience for me. And I thank the community and I thank my colleagues here on the board. And I wish all of you good luck in your future endeavors.
Thank you. Okay, finally, I'd like to wish all, everyone a happy and safe Thanksgiving. And then my final quote of the month, this is not a goodbye, this is a thank you. Nicholas Sparts, Mesut Inabot. Thank you.
Just to review the December meeting schedule, December 5, 6 P M reorganization meeting. P H S Library, committee, the whole meeting to follow. December 12, 6 o'clock, executive session. December 12, 7 o'clock, regular voting meeting, P H S Library. December 14, 5:30 P M, Finance Committee meeting with a budget presentation, P H S Library. Thank you.
Go ahead, Kevin. Motion to adjourn? I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion and adjourn, a motion and a second to adjourn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting adjourned.